Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the public, which stands one.
A nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Very nice to see everybody tonight. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. Pam's getting organized and she'll be ready to go.
So, I'm welcome at this time calling the meeting to order at 7:00. Oh, we're right on time. I slid right in because my car clock is fast. At this time, I would like to ask, is there any public comment? Do we have public visiting us?
I would like to just make a comment on the public comment. I mean, very brief.
Very brief, sir.
Yes, just want to say our hearts go out to those folks in Ukraine and what they're doing. And I end that with, may Putin rotten hell.
Oh, that's very succinct. Thank you, Bob. Is there other? We have others on with joining us tonight. Do we have anybody for public comment that's not on already on for another issue? And a special hi to Nick and everybody over at Community Voice Channel. At this time, I take the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve minutes of February 1, the regular meeting?
Also more.
Bob Moore, do I have a second? Bob Di Pietro? Second Bob Di Pietro, thank you. Are there any changes or corrections or deletions or additions? Adam, did you have?
Yeah. On page six of nine, the word council should be spelled C-O-N-S-E-L, not C-O-N-C-I-L. Which paragraph? We are graph eight D throughout.
Line of counsel.
Oh, yeah.
Spelling correction, spelling correction.
I think first month, first month, not burst.
Sir, would you repeat that for us, Bob?
I think there's a typo with first month. Oh, first, first, first month, bro.
Where might it be?
Oh, yeah.
Anything?
I don't know.
That's page two.
Page two?
It's birth. Yeah, we have had a lot of burst there, but that's not it. Thank you.
I'm sure that was one of those autocorrects. Thank you. Are there other corrections, additions, or deletions? Hearing none? Then I will, as amended, I will ask for a vote to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Asked unanimously, thank you. Moving on to appointments and resignations. We have a resignation from the Diversity Committee, Mr. Ortega, and we would have been with the board's acceptance. I will take all three at once. And B is the acceptance of the Temporary Building Commission alternate, Eric Lunt, and C. Linda McDonald, thank you. Linda McDonald's resignation. I would take that as well. So if I can have a motion to accept all three of these with gratitude for those who are resigning and with gratitude for those who are willing to serve, Eric Lunt. May I have a motion?
Oh, also move.
Bob, Bob and Bob. Bob Moore has made the motion. Bob Di Pietro has seconded. Are there any comments? Very good. Then I'll ask for a motion to accept the resignations and the acceptance of one. All in favor, please say aye.
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 It passes unanimously. So now we're going to go to reports and updates. And with us this evening, we have Amanda Gordon, the Diversity Commission chairwoman. Thank you, Amanda. And we have members, it looks like quite a few. Thank you for coming, everybody, from the commission. We appreciate seeing you all. Amanda, would you like to address the board first?
Laura, thanks, Pam, and other board members for inviting me to return. So I think I last saw you at the beginning of January and let you guys know a little bit about the brainstorming that our Diversity Commission had done. The ideas that we had and one of our priority activities was to get a survey out to town members. And the request from the board was to bring a draft back to the board for approval and that we could send to the town. And so what you have in your packet are three different things. You have the distribution plan that we pulled together and two separate surveys. One for those who are no longer in school, so mostly 18 and older, and those who are school-aged, middle school and high school, and including our transition students. So we did feel like we needed to have two different surveys to make the surveys appropriate for the different age ranges. The idea is that these will be distributed throughout the town via many different means. We want to have hard copies at some of our town locations, which you'll see on the distribution plan, including Bentley Library, the Town Hall, and the Senior Center, though we are open to other options that you guys may have. We also plan to distribute it electronically. These are created as Google Forms that people can access via a link. And to spread the news about this survey, we are planning to post on social media. We are hoping that the Bolton, the town of Bolton will include it in the bulletin at least once, if not twice, while we, while the survey remains open. We do plan to put flyers up at area businesses who are willing to allow us to post it on their site with a QR code so that people can easily access the surveys. And we will only be sharing data in an aggregate manner. So all of the data that's collected in these surveys, as you can tell, is de-identified. We do not ask for names. We do not ask for phone numbers, date of birth, anything that would identify a person. And so this is a completely anonymous survey. Both of them are unless people choose at the end to share their information. And as you will have seen, I do provide another option. If people wish to contact us and to be involved in other ways, they can reach out to me directly as opposed to connect their name and their information with the survey responses. Once it's approved by the Board of Selectment at the instruction of you guys as the board, the superintendent will, is willing to distribute it to school parents as well, not as a requirement, just but just as, you know, something that the board is supporting and sponsoring and would like for parents to consider letting their children, their children do. So that's a brief summary of the distribution plan. I hadn't intended to go into the surveys in depth. I did want to open the floor for questions, comments, feedback. But I did want to, before I do that, just make you aware that the copy that I sent you did have some repeat questions in the youth survey. So the second page of the youth survey, the questions labeled one, two, and three are repeats of the questions one and two above it. I apologize, I jumped the gun trying to get it to you guys as soon as possible. And so we were still debating format on those questions. So they are, they will only be included once in the final survey in case you were wondering why we were asking things twice. That was a mistake on my part. So really looking to hear what your thoughts are. We would really like to have this approved tonight because we, as you know, we have a tight timeline. Would like to get it distributed mid-March to mid-May so that we can spend the couple of months of the summertime to analyze and make sure we're getting results and recommendations back to you in the early fall.
Would you like other members of your commission to address the board before we go to our responses to you? Madam Chair?
Anybody who would like, who is welcome to chime in. They are here for support. We all worked very hard on this. It is a truly collaborative effort. You know, we brought drafts back to the group multiple times, and they're all here to answer any questions that you may have if I can't field them.
Are there any questions from the commission members or any comments? All right, then we'll start with the, please feel free to come back to us if you, if you have something. I do have one. I'll start off. And the, it was brought to me that in this, do you, did you believe you covered well enough the seniors, the people over 55 in the community? And addressing them as a diverse group of their age sector and their needs or their views?
We do ask questions related specifically to age. I will say that also, all of the demographics that we add at the end and ask people to fill out can be used as slicers or ways to cut and analyze the data at the end to see if there are differences. So we will be able to look to see if the responses to questions are different for people who respond based on different age ranges as well as all the other identifiers that are in the survey. So we do, as you know, Pam, we have identified diversity as having a broad definition. We are not just focused on race and race equity and stuff like that. So we did try to make the questions as broad as possible and include lots of different ways that people can identify, including age.
So and with the board, we'll just, when you're looking at it for one of your last look-throughs, take a look with that eye also. That person would appreciate it. Mike Aramina?
Yeah, Pam. I read through the survey this afternoon, and it's quite extensive. It's going to take somebody a few minutes to fill it out. It's not something you can just check boxes. You actually have to think a little bit on this one. And as far as seniors, I thought, being a senior, that we were fairly well represented in this. My views are going to be totally different than what my grandchildren are going to look at it because I'm looking at it through different eyes. So it will be interesting to me to see what the responses are from seniors and the teenagers. You know, how they look at diversity differently than I look at it. And like I said, you know, many times before, you know, I didn't realize we had a problem in town until, you know, I just never realized it, you know? It's, it's something that's seems odd to me in this town. But, but anyway, I read through the survey and I think it's very well done. And you should get some interesting information back. You really should.
Thank you, Mike. Bob Di Pietro, do you have a comment?
Yeah. My initial reaction was that the survey for the high school-aged kids was more focused and had more opportunity for meaningful feedback.
Than the adult survey?
Yeah.
Do you, can you point to something in specific? Bob, is there something specific that you'd like to draw an attention to?
I think that in general, the, the adult part was pretty generic. I'm not expecting personally a lot of meaningful information to come from that as much as I would for the high school kids. I think that all of the survey for the kids, high school ages, would give you more helpful information and possibly be more important.
Thank you. Adam, would you like to address something in the survey?
Well, I do like the, I do like the high school or the school survey. I think very good and may give us some really useful information. Just a question about the design of the survey. One of the things that I noticed is that in the, especially in the adult one, the nature of the categories of response is different from question to question. And sometimes it's easier for people to respond to the survey if, for example, the five, the range of five answers is the same for each question, like strongly agree, moderately agree, neutral, something like that. And then you do the question so that the responses are all the same. When people have to switch gears from question to question, that might get you a little bit more confusing responses. But other than that, I think the questions are great. And I definitely support the idea of getting it out there. I did have a question a little bit about who's going to interpret the results. You have a, you know, anybody with, with some sociology experience or statistic experience that's going to at least take a look at them? And how they're going to be interpreted?
So the, I mean, we can certainly solicit assistance to do the analysis. You know, I had offered to do some analysis. My background is in social work and sociology with some program evaluation. In my background, I believe Paula Myers, who's on the call, had also offered to assist with that. But if, if there are members of the community who would like to assist that have, you know, a strong analytic background, I will confess that my technical statistical skills are not, not as robust, but I am used to reporting out on survey data to boards and organizations.
Bob Moore?
The part that I like the best is the part on the town government, school system, and law enforcement. Those, those are the pages and those are the areas. And when I first agreed to put this group together that I was, really wanted input on. And this is what, we're, we're, we're a government body. Really wanted to know how this all, you know, how we, no, both ways, how we impact the community in this regard and vice versa. To me, this is important. The rest of it, well, I have an issue with that just because maybe I'm old and I have a different way of dealing with issues like this. And I just feel as a, as a citizen of the town, I had to write it down because I went through this a million times in my mind. I consider that, that it's important for me and every citizen of this town want to be respectful of one another regardless of any of our differences. That a hell of an umbrella. But to me, that umbrella encompasses what you have here. So, okay, that's why, yeah, filling this out. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not quite sure how you can interpret this in a way that is supposed to identify what this community is. If that's your, maybe I'm not sure what the goal is with the rest of it. I guess that's not what I'm understanding. Maybe you can help me with that.
Well, I think the rest of the survey, so I agree, like the most concrete parts are, the most concrete parts are, how is our school system doing? How is our town government doing? How is our law enforcement doing? The rest of it is about the culture of the town in general and how the community feels about diversity. And, and you mentioned that you feel that everybody in town, you know, ought to or does respect everybody and their differences. But that's your experience and people in the town may be having other experiences. And so I think the purpose of this survey is to elevate those experiences, to find out if that is the case. I am hoping that this survey doesn't come across as leading. We weren't going into it saying there are issues in this town and we want to bring them to light. The purpose is, we're just doing a community assessment. The results may come back and say that we are doing perfectly fine, and that is what we will report. The results may bring to light things that we were not aware of. It's really to do a broad community assessment as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion issues that may be impacting our residents on, on all levels. So I don't know if other members of the commission have comments about, you know, what the, the board members have said, but that would be my perspective on the purpose of the survey.
Yeah, Amanda, I'll just, I'll back you up on that. Bob, I think your question is excellent. You know, as a community, we want to make sure that we are all, you know, embracing each other and being a small town and tight-knit and everybody knows each other. And I think this is just one way of ensuring that we're on that track. And hopefully, we won't have much to report. But, you know, we'll see.
Okay, that's the report part. Then what?
So the, the goal would be for us to, you know, as a committee, look at the data, look at what it says, and come to you with recommendations based on the results. Now, we may have to turn to other community members and, and have, you know, group conversations or focus groups or whatever they can use to identify those solutions. But the, the idea is that if we identify issues that we are also identifying solutions to bring to you guys as the board for consideration, whether that's just us as the committee or involving other community members in identifying those solutions.
Thank you. I'm not asking a question just to be a pain because these questions I'll get asked. So I want to be able to answer them based on your account. Thank you very much.
And we want, we want you guys to feel comfortable, you know, sponsoring this because, you know, we are an advisory group to the Board of Selectmen. And so that's why, you know, we're here today to get your questions and feedback.
Pam?
I do have a question. And it was on number 29 where you asked, well, 28, you asked the zip code, and then you asked 29. Current resident, prior resident, currently work in Bolton, but not a resident, none of the above. Are you expecting? What is none of the above? What are you looking to gain from none of the above?
People who are completing the survey who shouldn't be, that will be weeded out of the results in the end. These, these links.
Thank you.
These links will be, these links will be public. There is no way, you know, there's no way to figure out exactly who is filling them. So if someone is saying that they don't meet any of the categories we are targeting, then they should not be included in the, the results and the analysis.
You want to say with your survey that you will be, under your introductory, introductory page, that the results will be shared and how they will be shared for the community's benefit or their interest in that type of thing? That was just one little thought.
Oh, and sorry, miss.
It shouldn't be, and please.
I just realized, Amanda, that question 29 leaves out an important group of people, which is people who attended Bolton schools but are neither residents nor prior residents of Bolton. There are a substantial number of people who would in fact be among some of the most first members of our community who attended Bolton schools over the years but do not live in Bolton and have never lived in Bolton.
Prior members? Maybe grew up as kids, but they also may have been transfer students, tuition-in students.
Right.
Would have.
And there also might be people who previously worked in Bolton for a very long time but never actually lived in Bolton. So you might want to include those two categories. There's some people with a lot of knowledge about Bolton who never actually lived here.
Yeah, we've had students for also 50 years.
And teachers and
True.
town employees and who've lived here or who've worked here for a long time but didn't actually live here.
How, just one question, how are we going to access that group? You know, how do, how do you make them aware of the survey?
Good question, but some of them are on Facebook groups. That, that, I mean, I know there are former teachers who never lived in Bolton who are on Facebook groups and communicate with students over the years. There are former students who are on Facebook groups and a friend, Facebook friends with other former students who never lived in Bolton. I mean, there's a big community of people who keep in touch with each other in various ways that might have access to this survey. And I really do hope they, they do respond because I know my own children have friends or acquaintances who never lived here, but whether they went, lived in Columbia or Hartford or wherever and attended Bolton schools and have very strong opinions about what goes on in Bolton, you know, they don't live here.
We also have the opportunity, there's a Facebook page, If I Grew Up in Bolton.
Right.
That might be a way, another way to reach out. It may reach out to some. Rhea has her hand up, and then Paula, Rhea, would you like to address?
Yes, I do. I would just like to say that I, I believe we should have a report on our findings. And I would think that, you know, we might find some weaknesses, but we may also find some strengths of, and we should be celebrating them based on the data that we, we accumulate from this survey. So, you know, a report should be written and submitted to the Board of Selectmen and then provided for the, the members of the community and people that were part of the survey. You know, it should be available.
That's all. I'm sorry, didn't mean, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure. Ms. Paula?
I think Adam brings up a good point. We had thought about it. We were talking, thinking about kids that went to school, but, but only thought about them in terms of having lived in Bolton. Do you think, Adam, or anybody, if we add the other question in there or other demographic in there, is it, do you think it's enough to be able to say, have one category of lived or worked in Bolton as one category? Or do you, do you think that we would need to parse that out as two separate demographics?
Why? I'm not sure. I mean, attended Bolton schools might give you some useful information or, I mean, you have, I currently work in Bolton, but I'm not a resident. So if you say, I worked in Bolton in the past, but I'm not a resident, or I attended Bolton schools but was not a resident or something like that, I guess it depends on how finely you want to parse the, the information and how useful you think that's going to be. I would personally find it quite useful to find out how people who attended Bolton schools but don't live here feel they were treated or they were experienced, what their experience was like as a, as a member of a Bolton school community who didn't actually live here.
So I would add that, I'm sorry, Paula, if I may.
Go ahead.
I would ask, in that light, that the, those past experiences, people who had the experiences of a generation or two generations ago, that that data might not be, or shouldn't be perhaps glommed in with the current data of what people are finding happening now.
Well, you're asking their age too, right?
Yep.
But I, am I making that clear? That what happened 25, 30 years ago is not what is transpiring today in the town of Bolton in 2022. So anyway, Mike?
Yeah.
Paula at the floor, I was, I interrupted her. Mike, would you just hold one minute?
Sure.
Well, that's sort of why I was thinking about lumping the, the questions of, I, I formerly worked slash, went to school in Bolton but didn't live here as one kind of category of people who didn't live in Bolton but had an experience here. But I agree with you, Pam, that, that how long ago they lived here makes a difference. Or, oh, sorry, how long ago they experienced Bolton makes a difference.
Thank you, Mike?
Yeah, I, I think it makes a, well, it makes a difference, but I think it's an extremely important piece of information to gather because if we have changed over the past 50 years or 40 years or whatever, or have we changed in the correct direction? The students that we have today may have one opinion, and that opinion may be pro, you know, positive or negative. What did the students 10 or 15 years ago think? And have we moved from a negative attitude or a negative atmosphere to a positive atmosphere? Have we stayed the same? You know, I think those, that's some pretty important information to find out which direction we're going. And along those lines, maybe our superintendent could help us with reaching out to those people or whatever to get the, get the survey to the students who came here, you know, either from Wellington or Columbia or from Hartford or wherever, and maybe get them really included so we could get that information.
We also have the Chairman of the Historical Society, John Tumi, who is also, not only is he a town historian, but he's been very active in the alumni group. He may have contact informations that could forward this survey out. So I would ask that in your review of this, that you look at a way to differentiate those that had recent experiences in town or had, had, have had.
or had had, have had experiences a decade or more away that would be perhaps a real transition.
You do have question 30, which asks that for prior residents. So all you might need to do is just ask for prior residents or students, or separate it out into the two.
And how long ago?
Yeah, because it asks, within the last two years, three to five years, five to 10 years ago, more than 10 years ago.
And that might work.
Which is the point that Mike was making.
Yeah.
So as you do the evaluating of the statistical information. I thank you for that part and my interruption. Thank you. Amanda, do you want to address again? Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, are you back?
No, I'm good. I'm just crossing.
Hand up. Sorry, Mike, Paula?
Sorry, I forgot to take my hand down.
Oh, what a good schoolgirl.
Yep.
With your name, the yellow hand was very, very clear, very clear up there. Juan, do you want to address the board?
Just to a little bit here. So I think, Pam, some of the things that you were talking about, trying to get that extra sense of data, I think all of it comes down to the reporting mechanism. So we can kind of curtail, once we start looking at the input, the information that we get, and all basically comes down to drilling down to the information received and reporting out on a certain metric. So if you want to include or exclude a factor or have something be a different kind of weighted average, that all comes down to how it's reported out from the information. So as long as we get the information, I think we can kind of splice and make sense of the data, any kind of way you're looking to get it.
Appreciate that. Ann Decker? Is that, is it something to add? Is your coffee or tea?
Yes, Bob's got a hand.
Bob DiPietro?
I am reminded about 30 years ago, when, before we actually went to see Bolton, I mentioned to somebody at work that I was going to move to Bolton. And they said, "Oh, boy, hope you can afford it." So what makes me think about is that if we do have any kind of diversity problem, it may have something to do with affordable housing. I'm wondering how that is going to be addressed in the survey.
Amanda, do you want to address that?
So there are a couple of questions related to housing in the first section. I think it's housing options for everyone in town. I did make it a point to include certain questions about people who are low income to see if their experiences in town are different because we do identify socioeconomic status as a type of diversity that folks have in town. And so we will be looking to see if that impacts people's experiences in town. We didn't ask any questions specifically about affordable housing. We did have an affordable housing survey that was distributed throughout the town, so I don't know where that stands and what the results of that are, but that may have more information related specifically to the affordable housing issue.
Thank you. Ms. Jen, do you want to add something to the conversation this evening?
Hi, yes. I'm looking forward to seeing the results of the survey. I'm very much looking forward to working on distributing it. And I think that, you know, I like to focus on the positives. So I'm looking forward to see the good that people report back from the town. And I'm hoping we can create some community events in the future to help further celebrate diversity. But also, it is good to check if there are any issues going on in town regarding it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. And so at this point, if I've heard from all the members, unless you, from the commission, I will go then to the board, and I will ask for are there any last thoughts from the board members? There's Bob DiPietro, there he is. He changed our screen, Bob. Hi. Bob Moore, any other questions?
No.
But at this time, I would take, I would ask for a motion to accept this survey. No, I'm going to take that back. I'm going to address the chairman first, if I might. Amanda, do you want to look at the survey again from the eyes of the feedback that you've gotten from the board tonight before we approve it?
I mean, given our timeline, I think that my hope would that be that with the suggestions and changes discussed this evening, that it could be approved pending those changes or assuming those changes will be made, specifically changing the introduction to talk about the fact that the results will be shared and where they will be shared, changing question nine to include those other two target populations, and changing question 30 to ask, to include those extra populations as well so we can figure out how long ago they were in town. And bearing Adam's feedback in mind, also trying to see if there's a way to make the categories have the same options at the top. I'm not sure that they are. I did, we did steal these questions from a variety of different places. But I will see if that is possible to make some of the questions asked in a similar way. And to Bob's point about it being meaningful, I mean, I am hoping that people that have stuff that they really want to share, whether it's positive or negative, will take their time on the narrative sections to provide that feedback to us. So the board, oh, go ahead.
No, I just have one question. Have, you sort of alluded to it, but I didn't get it. Has this been reviewed by the superintendent or the Board of Ed, the part that's going to go to the students?
Yes, Kristin Heck reviewed it yesterday. She gave us a couple of minor suggestions, which we have implemented.
Okay, thank you.
Does it have board approval, Ann?
Does it have board?
Super, does it have school board?
No. The school board did not approve the survey. What we're going, what was requested was Kristin said, "It's not real," and we told Kristin, "It's really not the school district survey. It's the Diversity Commission survey. We're utilizing the platform that the school system has to provide the survey to the students en masse." And the superintendent said that she would do that if the Board of Selectmen formally requested that she send the survey out. So it's really not coming from the school district. It's coming on behalf of the town.
I don't like that thought.
Bob Moore?
I, we have worked for years to try and get greater cooperation between the Board of Education and Board of Selectmen. And by doing that, I think it's basically, not even asking the board, it's a sidestep of the board. And if that's the way it's going to happen, then I would vote, we don't do this until you have approval by that board. I think it's important because they're going to, that board, the questions from the parents are not going to come to us. They're going to come to that board, and it's important that they become a part of this. I mean, this is, you know, a significant portion of the people who are responding back. You probably get as many response back from the students as you will from regular citizens. I don't mean to be an obstructionist, but I just assumed that it had gone in front of that.
Adam?
I do tend to agree that it's not, maybe it's a point of protocol, but they are the board that is going to get the feedback from their parents. And so I do think they ought to at least see it and approve it. If not, if they want to approve it or not approve it, that's up to them, but it ought to be at least referred for their view before it goes out to members of the school community.
Thank you. Bob DiPietro?
I agree with that.
Mike Aramida?
I agree with the, with the other members of the Board of Selectmen, although I don't think it would preclude us from voting on it tonight to approve it so that it could move along in a fairly quick manner once they got approval or at least presented it to the Board of Education. So I think, I think we could vote on it tonight. And just one other comment, when Bob DiPietro talked about, you know, being able to afford to move to Bolton, you know, that's, that's one of the big hindrances in our community diversity. And it's not just the cost of Bolton, it's our dirt. And we have, as Carl Price told me when I first was going to move here, that we're the highest swamp in the country. And because of that, we have to have large lots for subsurface disposal of water and everything else. And, you know, the fact that we're an expensive community has a lot to do with our soil, unfortunately. A thing that we can't overcome, high-density housing can't exist on the soil that we have throughout the town. So in order to attract high-density housing or lower-income housing, we have to have a whole different way of disposing of things, so to speak. And that's, you know, we can fight City Hall, we can fight money, but this is, Mother Nature gave us this gift, and it's going to be very hard to overcome. And we've looked at it many times with high-density housing and where we could put it and everything. And it always seems to boil down to the ground and how much water the ground can accept. We got that nice big piece of property across from the gazebo that can hold maybe three houses in there in umpteen acres, you know. A beautiful piece of property would look great with high-density, low-income housing, or not even low-income, just high-density housing. But it can't, it can't go there because there's no way to make it function with a usable septic system without basically an acre minimum lot. So that's, that's one of the big.
Any of the lots Bolton are multiple acres because they could not park, we understand that.
Right.
It's very true. Top of Bolton notch, I mean, that's just telling.
It's not a, it's not a sociological, a social issue. It's, it's an issue that Mother Nature gave us. It's beyond our control in that extent, and.
If I can go back to the other, the question at hand, which is approving this and whether or not to go to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Education. I will add my agreement to the other four members in that they are duly elected and they're, they have a specific statutory mission as well as a town mission. And I would, at this time, take, accept a motion then, that we accept both surveys as a Board of Selectmen and that it be approved by the other, the student portion be approved by the Board of Education. Do I have a motion? Someone making that motion?
Madam, first, select when I move that the board approve these surveys with the modifications discussed with the Diversity Commission tonight and request that the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools cooperate by submitting these surveys to the school population.
With their approval. Is that part of, is that part of your?
I assume that if they submit it to the school population, they'll, on our request, that they will have approved it before it's submitted.
Thank you.
I don't know that they want to approve it. Maybe they just want to pass it along. I'm not saying they have to approve it, but it should be presented to them with our request that it be submitted to the schools.
Is there a second? Bob DiPietro, and would you, you're the floor, sir?
I'd say, sure.
Okay, Bob Moore, does that meet with your approval? Do?
It's not exactly what I want, but I can live with it. I'll be the first person and fuck it up.
Don't you love these meetings, guys? Mike, do you have a comment?
No, I was just willing to second it, but Bob beat me to it.
And Bob, you didn't have another comment, sir, is that correct, Bob DiPietro? Okay, very good. Then, as long as there are no other comments, I will ask for a vote. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And we have a unanimous vote then this evening. Thank you very much. And to the commission, thank you for your hard work and thank you for coming before us tonight and to see so many of you here. That was great. Please come to many more. Thank you very much. This time, because we have a heavy agenda, we can move on. Amanda, you're.
Pam, can I ask?
Ma'am?
I just wanted to clarify, I want to make sure, we didn't purpose, we didn't intend to leave the Board of Ed out. We, we were thinking that this is a town survey. That's why we ran it past the superintendent, which is fine. I think it's a good idea to send it to the board. I just want to, I just want to make sure we understand that is this survey coming from the town? Is it, like, are we looking for a vote from the Board of Ed or consensus from the Board of Ed? That, and should we, when we submit the survey to the townspeople, are we saying it's coming from the town or the town and the Board of Ed? And I'm only asking this because I think it matters when they're looking at it, how they're going to interpret some of these. So I just want to make sure that we understand how we should be presenting this to the town.
Adam is the maker of the motion?
My, my expectation in making that motion was that it is coming from the town and that we are requesting the assistance of the Board of Ed and the Superintendent of Schools to present it to the school.
Perfect, thank you.
The gatekeeper for what goes through their mechanism. We're not telling them that they have to approve it or not. We're just asking their assistants to make sure that it gets as wide a circulation as it can.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that we understood that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, everybody, on the commission, and thank you for your hard work. We appreciate having you here tonight. All right, for the board, if you please move on to properties and facilities report. Jim, would you like to speak on that?
So we did, we did have a quick meeting, I think it was last week, recently. Let's use the word recently.
It's budget time.
We've had a lot of meetings, so you'll have to excuse me for not remembering exactly. And the main crux of that meeting was to discuss a load sip project. We had put a project in that did not look like it was getting legs. And so Capital Region Council Governments, that is reviewing these applications on behalf of the Connecticut DOT, which is where the load sip money's come from, asked us to put forward another project. And we, we talked about a couple of projects, and the project that we decided to put forward was a path that kind of really meets a lot of our goals with regard to the vibrant community study and connectivity. As you know, we'll be having a meeting, I think it's next week, regarding the connectivity grant between the notch road and the Heritage Farm. And the church next door to Town Hall has let us know that they're not necessarily in favor of bringing a pathway around the corner and down the side of the street there to go to the farm. So one of the things that we've looked at very carefully and have worked on putting forward to Capital Region Council Governments is a pathway that's a combination boardwalk, a couple of bridges over wetland areas, and stone dust-type pathway to go between the Town Hall and the State Trooper's Office, kind of along the Town Hall property line and going out to the farm. And again, you know, we found, the committee found that when we looked at this, it really met a number of goals, one with the connectivity and two with the vibrant community study and, you know, making, you know, this center of town a little more active and a center of activity. So that project, we are working on getting together for review by Capital Region Council Governments. We're meeting with the folks that are currently engaged as consultants for some future planning for the farm, and we're having a meeting about that. And we, we've had an initial meeting with Capital Region Council Governments, and they think that this project is going to meet the criteria. We talked about a couple of road projects that were possibilities but had less opportunity for funding based on the available funding. So this is the project we decided to put forward. We also did a very quick update on cemeteries. We talked about applying for a grant for some signage and flagpole. We talked a little bit more about drainage issues and removal of some soil for the cemetery over near St. Maurice's Church. We made some good connections with a couple of folks in the community who were very helpful that day, so it was excellent. Anybody who was there, did I miss any? Anybody who was there, did I miss anything that was key?
Jim?
Sure.
One of the things that had been asked of us when it came to the cemeteries was to look into the flag holders for the veterans' graves. Could we not let that fall by the wayside this time?
Make it a note.
Okay, thank you.
We were asked about where the brass ones, not the, not the plastic ones that snap and hang.
Right.
The metal, the metal, maybe they're not brass, but maybe they are.
Cast aluminum.
Yeah.
So they don't steal them.
Definitely made a note that I can read.
Thank you.
It's important because sometimes I'd make notes I can't read.
You're not the only one.
Very long for you, sir, I understand. Very good. Uh, any other questions on the properties or facilities report?
Just one thing, it's just.
Bob Moore?
Did get an inquiry from the property owners across the street from the library. That's it. I know nothing else and would, and I would ask the Board if, with their permission, I can follow it up. So report back to the Board as to what they want, what they're looking for.
Do I have a consensus amongst from the Board that Bob Mark and talk to the?
Minicucci property that's across from the library, large parcel. We had, in the previous administration, we, we, there were discussions on it and we were about as far apart as the North and South Pole. And don't know if there's a change of heart on the other side.
Jim?
I have no.
And you have Mike and Bob. Then we have a Bob DiPietro?
I'll follow it up.
All right, we have consensus then for follow up. Then we'll move on then, because I don't believe there's any action needed. But I will add that there is going to be on the seventh open doors at the Town Hall on Monday night at seven o'clock for neighbors to who wish to come and take a look and talk to their town people, town leaders, town professionals about the long planned proposed road safety project between the firehouse and the Town Hall, enclosing the deep culvert on the north side of the road in combination with a pathway, a gravel walk bike path on top of it, just that short stretch. So, uh, March seventh, I'm sorry, six thirty P M. And I'll be here at Town Hall if neighbors want to stop by and take a look at the plans. We're just going to show them what's in the final plan. This is something that's been on the plans since, and started in two thousand and sixteen, if I remember correctly.
Nineteen, I think.
Well, it started talking way before that. And that's nineteen and then COVID happened. And so we want their neighbors to have a, an ability to look at it and address and just talk to their. Everyone's welcome, not just the neighbors, everyone's welcome.
Monday?
Monday, yes, the seventh at six thirty here at Town Hall. It won't, it's not in the form of a meeting, it's just an open house for people to come, look at the plans. So if, at that point, we'll move on to the C F Y twenty-one budget report. Are there questions regarding the budget report? For February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two?
Our Finance Director would have highlighted something if she had a concern. I did go over it, I, I didn't see anything to be concerned about, but I certainly be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Still got to figure out how to print it out right. Comes out in two pages.
It's a landscape. There are no, would would people like us to pass on this and come back? So you can look at it again?
No, I.
We need action on this, correct?
Do we need action on the budget report? No.
All right, that we've looked at, thank you. We'll move on, we do need action on the budget transfers on D, which has been included in your packet. I'm not going to go over each one of those. The one that I was asked to comment on, and that was the brakes issue that was needed on the senior, the big senior van. Of course, from the view of the mechanic, our, our town mechanic who did the work fabulously for us and the purchasing of the parts was done by, and that's why there's transfer needed, is coming out of that, the other budget. He said that the van sat for over a year because we didn't go anywhere with these large vans because of COVID. We didn't have people in the vans and the rusting and the crumbling of the brakes happened from just setting out there. Is there any other question on the, on any of those transfers? I'll take a question at this time. Then, if not, I don't hear none, I would ask for a motion to accept the transfers.
I'll move, we accept the transfers as presented.
And a second? Bob DiPietro, you're up, Bob, Mike, all right, Mike. Thank you for this, Mike, I'm here for the second. And are there any other, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of the budget transfers as presented, please say aye.
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 And we have a unanimous vote then, thank you. Ongoing business, number six.
Well, we do have the AP list, right?
Yeah, we do have.
Because it's next in the package.
Sorry.
It's not your fault.
Would you like to jump to that?
No, it's okay.
All right, I did the same thing.
Then I will, for ongoing business, we have Stephanie Crane. We have a recommendation and from our town administrator with his high recommendation that she be accepted as, as permanent status as our Recreation Director.
Oh, so moved, she is excellent.
Is there a second? Bob, Bob DiPietro, can you give a second, please? Thank you, thank you, sir. How many hours is, I believe she is full-time, is that correct?
It's a, it's a full-time position, Bob. And and I would just say that since I have the floor for a moment, that she's done an extraordinary job in some really trying times. I think we're, we're well-served to have her. And I think, I think she's going to be a, a great addition to our team. She's a team player and she's done some things, you know, out, outside of the scope of her normal activities, things that we've asked her to do, she's embraced. And so I think she's really a team player and she'll make an extraordinary member of our team going forward. And I, I think we're fortunate that she's interested in taking on the position in, in this current climate where it's difficult to find good people and, and onboard them, I think.
Okay, thank you.
She's very positive in the position and seems to be very well-respected here in Town Hall from the experience that I've had. So I would agree with that. Um, is this, we need more than action, sir?
Yep, yeah, it was customary.
Adam, would you like to approve, make a motion?
Didn't, we already, didn't you?
We did already.
It's been made and seconded.
Thank you, Adam.
I gotta give you a piece of sugar.
I know the feeling.
Sarah's just waiting for the vote.
All in favor then? It's a unanimous vote, thank you very much. Be a discussion of additional budget workshop and possible dates. We would like to ask that you would hold March eighth open on your calendar that we would come forward if, we will cancel it if we don't need it. But there is a thought that if All-American Waste and those numbers come through higher than what had been budgeted, that we, we would need to come back to the Board. So if you will hold March eighth open for seven P M., we would appreciate that. But as a good possibility, it will be canceled. Jim, do you want to add to that?
No, I, I think you said it, you know, we've, we've got a five percent placeholder in there. We are meeting with Willie Waste tomorrow. All-American Waste is working on numbers. So as long as we are within that placeholder, we would not need to meet as a Board. But i- in the event that those numbers come in higher than what we've put in for a placeholder, I, I think the meeting probably would be fairly quick.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, we'll move on then to see the Ocean, OSHA Citation Update that is in reference to the Fire Department. Jim, do you want to take that?
So we, we did, we received an OSHA citation. Our fines were in excess of five thousand dollars. I did have a couple of meetings with OSHA. Some of those meetings included the chief. And I, if I'm not mistaken, the deputy chief was there for a couple of those meetings. And we were able to come to an agreement to reduce the fines by fifty percent. I put a purchase order in or a request for payment in today to get those fines paid. We are working with OSHA in a consultant fashion and they are helping the Fire Department put together a OSHA-compliant respiratory protection program as a result of the citations that we received. There are some other action items that the Fire Department is well underway and working on. We have two deadlines that we're working toward meeting. One of them was February twenty-eighth and we didn't meet the deadline for those items. And we are working well toward meeting the other deadline. And a comment that I received from the chief was that the gentleman that we're working with for the consultation services is very positive and very helpful. And he would rate that experience as very good.
And what was the final figure on the fine?
The twenty-six hundred dollars, I don't have the number exactly, it was about twenty-six hundred dollars.
I'd like, on behalf of the Board, say thank you very much for your keen eye on this and your interest and your negotiating, negotiation skills. Board member, Bob DiPietro?
You're muted, Bob.
Still muted.
We can't unmute you, Bob. Can, you try again?
There he goes.
You're muted.
Okay.
Welcome back.
What was the background on that? I'm not sure.
We, we, I, I did report, you know, some time ago when the incident happened that we had a firefighter that was injured during the course of a fire and had been transported by ambulance and was hospitalized for a night. That firefighter entered a fire without wearing an S C B A, thinking that they could affect a difference very quickly. And unfortunately, based on exhaustion, toxic fumes and a number of other things, experienced some difficulties with, with breathing af- afterward. So that was the, that was the nature of the issue. And that was reported to OSHA by an, by an employee who, who remains anonymous is because they're allowed to do that and, and supposed to do that. They're, they're supposed to be protected from and so that, that was how the, the reference was made to OSHA. And we, we were cited a, a number of things based on that and with some holes in the program that we had. And we, we, we have to deal with the outcome of that.
Thank you. Mike? Bob Moore? Okay, Michael?
No, I have nothing to add. I think Jim covered it completely.
No, Adam?
Was it an issue of non-compliance with existing orders? Or was it an issue of the, the, the general orders weren't sufficient? OSHA needs.
Well, could you repeat that, Adam? I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
But I'm wondering is, was it, I mean, what was the source of the issue? Was it, was it non-compliance with existing program? Or was it that the program wasn't to meet the OSHA requirements?
Both.
Both. And did the chief take? As to the non-compliance?
Yes.
And did that be chief as well?
Well, I mean, it's disappointing, but there it is.
I would like to say something here and as, from my position in following the situation. And it was a first responder situation. It was an immediate response and it was intended to correct a situation that looked obvious, but was not obvious in the immediate action. And so it was, it could have been seen either way. And OSHA and others took it to the side that they sort of waited and had more equipment available. Thank you very much. Then, going on to other business, under ongoing business, we've had a subcommittee parade meeting. Bob Moore and Elise Marks met and they are working on putting together the parade meeting. Now, the parade for Memorial Day. So we're looking very forward to stepping off at ten o'clock for the first time in three years. Is there anything you'd like to add, Ms. Moore?
No, I, I think those who are accustomed to being there will be pleasantly might say surprised, we pleased that we'll, we'll be following a very similar format that we started by Norm Price decades ago with some modifications to honor our, our veterans, I think, in a better manner.
In, in the sense of a memorial, we are, because this is not Veterans Day, this isn't a memorial. We are asking that there no candy be thrown because it is not a parade similar to something like the Fourth of July Parade that happens in Lamentic. So we're asked that it's done with the most amount of respect. And we're asking groups to please come forward if they would like to participate in the parade, whether it is scouts or other groups that would like to participate, please contact Town Hall. And, and they will get through to Ms. Moore and Ms. Marks. Uh, we also had a, a very nice hour visit from a Cub Scout den that was working to getting ready to cross over just to full scouts. And it was a mix of boys and girls, which was very nice to see. They were very complimentary and we're very excited to be in their Town Hall. Their parents had never crossed the threshold either. So it was great to see new people, new faces in Town Hall. Um, we have a couple of things later on. So we're going to move down to then, is there any other, other business, ongoing business?
No.
Thank you, we'll move on then to new business. A, for the AP Detail List, I accept a motion to accept the AP Detail List so we can have discussion.
Nothing extraordinary there, so I'll move the adoption.
Bob Moore moves, do I have a second? Bob DiPietro? Thank you, and any comments? Questions?
No.
Then, Bob, you, I raise all sets and I, just waiting for Noddy. I would then ask for the vote, all in favor of accepting the AP Detail List, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to B, information on an act reforming motor vehicle assessment. This is in your packet, this has come from the Governor. The Governor has submitted a bill to the General Assembly and it's part of his budget package in which they would like to, well, you probably read what was in your packet. I, I don't want to be, it's very early in the legislative process, whether or not this happens. The proposal came back with a a listing for all the towns as how much money that they would get. And in Bolton's portion, if I remember correctly, it was over five hundred thousand dollars. But it would, from looking and talking to the tax collector, that would not cover the amount of money that we currently collect, collect for motor vehicles. So it would be a shortfall. And at the present time, if you wish to look it up, I made the call and it's under L C O six two four. So it sounds like it has not been fully drafted at this time, but you can, let's say, Commissioner's Office. It is six two four at the present time. More to come.
Stick it to the towns and
what?
Give a break to the cities.
Are you saying that our total motor? Are you saying that our total motor vehicle levy would be even half a million dollars? Because right now it's 1.7.
And so the portion that the, the portion that the state would give us to replace the 1.6 is a half million dollars. So I think it's got a long way to go before it comes out.
They're looking to put a cap of 29 on it.
We wouldn't lose everything.
Jill calculated it, I think, about $150,000 loss.
Yeah.
Shortfall.
Yeah, that's a significant amount of money.
I really have to question putting commercial motor vehicles on the personal property declaration. I think that's just asking people to commit tax evasion.
Yes, you're right.
I don't know what the thought, what the thought is there, but okay. It'll go through the mill, I guess.
Yeah. Hopefully it dies in committee.
Hopefully the sausage maker.
Hopefully the council of municipalities will object to that.
I'm sure there'll be quite a bit of conversation between that group and the council of small towns. And if the board wishes to go forward, we can certainly put our thoughts on paper and send it into the finance committee. Looking at C, consider an act on tax sale. There are two parts to this. And Jim Rupert, do you want to start on the first part?
So the first is that the tax collector has given a letter to First Select and Sawyer and myself recommending that several properties go to tax sale was there are more than three years in arrears on taxes. And they are listed as 129 Notch Road, 11 Hebron Road, and then three parcels on Colonial Road that are all owned by the same individual.
Those are parcels without the loan?
Correct. Those are empty parcels.
Are the other parcels occupied?
The 129 Notch Road, I believe is, that is four years in arrear. 11 Hebron Road is three years in arrears. And that one I know is currently occupied. The other three are, the other three are empty lots.
Any questions from the board?
Do we have an idea of what the total acreage of the three colonial road is now? And are they contiguous?
They are contiguous. We did have, so this, I remember this a few years ago, this came up. My recollection is that the attorney that we refer these to chose not to put those up on the tax sale, did not think they would get any activity. The owner asked the town if the town wanted them. And the town just has absolutely no use for them. They're not contiguous with anything that the town owns. So the answer was no at, at that time. And we, we worked on his behalf to talk to a couple of developers who looked at it and thought that they could potentially meet the zoning regulations by combining these three lots. But the house that they would have to put up there was just so small that it, the, the return investment would be almost nonexistent.
The one house on three lots?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification. Are there any other questions?
No, I recall, I asked the issue. We tried a number of times.
Yeah, trying. And we actually tried to hook this gentleman up with a couple of developers.
Just so he could bail out.
I would like, I would like a motion then on the table, please put forward to start the tax sale on the properties that have been listed that are more than three years overdue as presented.
Jill, there's one that's three years. So it would be three years and, three.
I'm sorry, three years and more, over three years.
Also move. Second.
Any other discussion? Then I'd ask for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Have a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. The second part of this from the Bolton Lakes Regional Water Pollution Control Authority that had five names listed to it is being remanded back to the Pollution Control Authority for their review. And then if, on future date, may come back to this board.
Unfortunately, it got forwarded to us by the tax collector. And it has to go before, before the authority, when the authority moves it forward.
Really, this is just information. That's all it is. The Bolton Lakes Water Pollution Control Authority will have to act on this.
Right.
And it may come back to us at a future date.
Right, in some form.
Very good.
Does the tax collector need authority to engage a tax sale counsel? Because she asking, she, I'm just not clear whether she's asking for that or.
Well, that's, that is typically the process.
Need our specific approval or not?
But Adam, would you make the motion? And that will cover us, I think, either way. Because I am not familiar what, how, where the wording is under policy and procedure. So would you make the motion?
Sure. I'm not sure I am either, but I'll, I'll be happy to. I, I move that we authorize the tax collector to proceed with tax demands and tax sales for this specific property she requests. And that we also.
Which, which, what are we talking about?
The first one. We're going back to the first one.
Well, it's one memo.
There's two, there are two memo.
No, the only one that's.
Yeah, she typically, she typically uses a specific attorney. And I think that's, that's what.
Oh, you're referring to the ones we just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, we're trying to make the motion so that it's clear that she has the authority to engage the attorney.
I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the sewer authority.
Which is, which is attorney, which is attorney Adam Cohen.
I'm sorry, say it again, please.
Adam Cohen.
So Adam has put forward the motion.
Well, I didn't finish the motion.
I didn't mean to cut you off. No, I wasn't sure.
Phrase your motion, start over again.
I thought we were talking about the other one. I apologize.
I'll, I'll rephrase my motion, Madam First Select. I move that we authorize the tax collector to send tax demands and initiate the process of tax sales for the five properties we previously approved tax sales for. And that we authorize her to engage a tax sale counsel, Adam Cohen, as she recommends.
At this point, I will ask for a consideration of parliamentary procedure. We've already voted on accepting the, this in a prior motion without the caveat of the attorney.
I don't think it can hurt to just let it stand and I'll second it so it can go.
Do I have consensus amongst the board that we can?
We're just giving permission to proceed with an attorney.
Everybody's comfortable with that? All right, good. Then Adam, thank you very much. And could I have a second?
I will. Mike already seconded.
Is there further conversation, further discussion? All in favor, then all, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Adam, for indulging in your expertise. We have item D, consider an act on the purchase of tires and rims for the fire department brush truck. In this case, we have a situation where we have a specific vehicle that has a specific size needs. And there is only one vendor. Is that correct, Mr. Rupert?
So the, the tires that we would like to put on this brush truck are only available manufactured for this vendor. And so what we are asking is that we've included a section out of the town ordinances in accordance with the ordinance. It's my request on behalf of the fire department that the board of selectmen consider waiving a requirement for three verbal quotes as would be required under this section of the town ordinance.
And this is for the truck that's.
It's for the brush truck. Yes.
Just being bought, purchased through the grant. But, but in that process, this, this, we have, we're doing this.
Correct. Because so FEMA requires that we either buy off a competitive bid list, we buy off a state bid list, and we follow our own purchasing policy procedures.
And this will cover us.
And this, this will cover us in following our purchase policies. My move, we do it.
Bob Moore moves that we act on the purchase of the tires and the rims for the fire department brush truck. But, but Bob DiPietro seconds. Mike Aramita, would you like to address it?
Yeah, just a couple of things. It's not, it, it's all encompassing. It has a lot more than just the tires and the wheels. It's specialty items that will go to the trucks, some modifications to the body, a whole host of things that are unfortunately only, well, done, they're done by a vendor that we deal with all the time. So we're comfortable with their work and they just happen to be the ones that are sole source for the, the tires. So it's, it's not just tires and rims that is that much money. There's other significant work that's involved in it that, that will make this thing work. But it's, we're kind of limited to the one person.
All of those things are necessary in order to install these tires and rims.
Yep.
Bob Moore, would you amend your motion then, please, to add the additional accessories that are needed?
What's the total of the, of what we're approving to be purchased?
11, 11.
11,471. It's in your packet.
Now, I, I see the numbers, but there's three different quotes from the same. Well, there's two purchase orders which add up to $17,000. So I'm not, what?
It, it's actually the 6,251 and the 5,220. For a total of the 11,471. That, that one Firematic quote covers them all.
I see. So it's labor is one quote.
It was, it was confusing.
Tires is the other. And then we have the overall quote.
Yeah.
And we have a second. Bob DiPietro did. Bob DiPietro, do you want to address the board?
Bob was going to amend the motion.
I was going to amend the motion to include the additional items, wheels with kit assembly, vendor modifications as noted.
And Bob DiPietro, do you accept that, that amendment?
Yes, yes.
So we have an amended motion before us. No further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much. I'm going to add, under chairman's prerogative, under new business E for other, just to bring you up on two very small things. One, we've had multiple requests now from, to me to have some lines painted somewhere in town so we can have some outdoor pickleball court accessibility other than at the tennis courts because there's great interest in it. So we'll, I've asked our very talented town administrator to please, that's not to be published, that he's very talented. We know he is, to, to look at other possibilities for where we could locate asphalt that could be, have lines painted on it. And the other thing is the lieutenant governor did call me this evening. She wishes to come to Bolton and with our assistance, go through the list of Korean War veterans that she would like to honor, come to Bolton to honor the Korean War veterans with the commissioner of Veterans Affairs at a meeting place that we would set up and that she would ask us to please vet the list that we have in town. And in, we would put together a date and put together a reception for these Korean War veterans for an honor in recognizing them. So that will be, we'll work on that because it was a very nice offer. Is there any objection? Thank you. And so at this time, I would ask for a five, five minute recess. It is 8:24. We will be back at 8:29. Thank you. Would you please push pause?
Recording stopped.
I'm trying to figure out how to get recording back.
Recording in progress.
There you can go.
Thank you. At eight twenty-nine, we'll call the meeting back to order. We're at number eight, the first selectman's report. Item A, discussion on approval for a plaque for Hans DePold. This is in regards to honoring our former town historian who put many years of effort into the Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary War route and taking it not only from the town's perspective, having what the encampment site at the Heritage Farm, but also taking it to a state and to a national level, bringing in many historians as well as local politicians, of which I was honored to be a part of that, and also for his detailing it and writing his pieces of it in his prose that are also included in his book, which is available for sale in the town clerk's office. And I mean that with a chuckle, because I wrote the foreword to it. The plaque is being asked for by the farm commission. They have three very large storyboards that have been created and paid for through a grant from the National Park Service. What they would like to have is at some point, somewhere, somehow, an honor to the work that Hans DePold did on bringing this together. Not the plaques, but the, the history portion, bringing it to life for the W three R work. And in talking with them, they are not quite there with what kind of a plaque, where they would like it, and how much it would cost, so they will come back to us at the, at another meeting. They are looking at, hopefully, unveiling the plaques to Mr. DePold in sometime in June. So I'll be back to you on that one. COVID-19 report. I studied the details today. We have, where is sharp decline on the new infection rate, which is very good. And we're to a passing out at the town library on March fifth.
Saturday, I believe it's a Saturday. You had the conversation.
Oh, I know.
Kathy.
I know. I've, I've half of that. Not in my, at the library, they will be passing out the COVID test kits that we have been given to the town and masks also.
Nope, we're out of masks at this point.
We're out of masks at this point. Thank you for the update. And it will be at the library, and it will be from eleven to two, I understand. Not ten to two, but eleven to two, and the date is posted in front of the library, as a matter of fact. So if you want to know the date, please contact, please look at the town website and go to the library page. Number C, go out to bid for the bond council. I don't know what other means, but to out to bid for the bond council, although we've had sort of a beginning discussion on this. We've had, we've approached by other, another bond council or other bond councils that would like to represent Bolton. We were looking at needing a bond council coming up in the probably near future. And at this point, I would like to know the board's wishes, whether they wish to go out to bid or to continue on with the bond council that they have used over the last number of years. Looking at how tight our budget is, that's the reason that I wanted to bring this up, and the fact that we had other bond council, councils approach us. So what is the board's wishes? And I'll go around, and we'll start with Mike Aramita, since you're in the screen. Would you have a thought on?
Yeah, I, I can't see a downside to going out to bid. You know, the, the bond council that we have should be able to underbid everybody else because they have an intimate knowledge of us and what we're all about in our financial situation and everything. So I would think that they would be the low bidder. If they're not, then we make out, because the other bond council will have to do the exact same job for less money. So I think it's in our best interest to go out to bid.
Bob DiPietro, do you have a thought on this process?
Only that, I think Jill Collins made a remark that the one we had is familiar. The building, who Mike said, they are familiar, more familiar with our situation. So I had the feeling from Jill that you just, soon we keep the ones currently being categorized. But like Mike said, we're going to lose.
Thank you. Bob Moore?
The key of going out to bid on this, and I think Adam may agree with that, is not just that you're not looking at the bottom line, you're really looking at what the bond council can provide for you and who's providing it to you.
Would that tell you, would you find that out through a bid process?
Well, you would find out through an interview process, and I've gone through this a couple of times, and, and just both times, the council we had, when you looked at what they provided and what the other one almost provided as far as their personnel and all that, we ended up retaining the same one. But that doesn't mean that there isn't a bond council that can do the job as well as this person does. I don't know that. I'm not, I don't know, I, I'd go to you on that, because that's a, that's a that's a specialty there, and there's only a few that do it well.
It is a specialty. I do think that, just on general principles, that if it hasn't gone out to some form of selection process in the last five years or so, that it ought to go out again.
Yeah.
So I, I don't, I mean, there's no three years, if you say five years, if you say four years, any of those would be fine.
You should do about every five.
But, but if it hasn't gone out in five years, and I guess it hasn't, then we ought to look at it again and do a request proposal and get people to justify themselves again. And maybe we may end up with the same people. They are very large, and, you know, they do a lot of bonds, municipal bonds, but doesn't mean somebody else won't come in and, and make a showing and do a good job.
All right, then I would ask for a motion. Adam, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I, I move that we send out a request for proposals for bidding for bond council and the staff draft one for our approval.
And a second, Mike Aramita, you're seconding that?
Yep.
Is there any other conversation? Thank you for that, and I will ask for a motion, a vote, then, please, all in favor of going out and getting, having it come back to us. Is that what you're saying, Adam?
Well, I'd like the staff to draft it and then come back to us.
Come back to us.
Before we send it out.
Very good.
That makes sense.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion is passed unanimously. Thank you. We have item D, and that is we have lost our evening shift resident state trooper. He has came to us and, in very good standing and leaves, leaves us in very good standing, but unfortunately way too short of a time. He, from December thirtieth, maybe, he came on board and left on the twenty-fifth of this month. He has been swept away on governor detail for the lieutenant governor. She did not bring it up in the conversation today. And probably justified it, so because I would have teased her pretty hard about it. So we're sorry, we'd like to say a very special thank you to our former trooper. He did a wonderful job, Jonathan Santiago, and was a very positive influence. The Cub Scouts loved him. And I'd like to say a very warm welcome to our temporary assignment trooper Kristen Coit. She is a sixteen-year veteran, and she comes with a dog. She has a German shepherd whose name I apologize.
Nico.
Nico, thank you. And so you may get to meet Nico in the near, near future. So we welcome her aboard and pleased to have her, and hopefully can keep her for longer than temporary duty. At this point, I would turn it over, then, to the administrator's report, monthly report.
So those of you who are online and did not get a paper copy at tonight's meeting or, or delivered to your door, don't actually have my report, Kathy didn't want to just send out one more thing. She thought she had sent out enough already, and that we could cover the ground here pretty well. So some of the things that we've been working on during the last month are the load sip grant application, which we've talked about, the connectivity trail project. You know, we've gotten a map, which we will be printing and have ready. We've created the flyers that Pam so graciously went and handed out. We've been in communication with residents who have been asking some really great questions. We're collecting and providing the information for the town and capital budgets, and I just want to thank the board for finishing up budget process with the town budget very quickly. That gives me some extra nights off, so I appreciate that. We've had various subcommittee meetings. I completed a redraft of the alcohol and marijuana policy based on the feedback from the board in the public hearing that is currently with the town attorney, who is reviewing it not only for content, but for, to make sure that it is in concert with the current laws that have been adopted by the state. Met with outgoing trooper John Santiago, interested in TDY trooper Kristen Coit, as well as their, their, another sergeant, who came out to meet with us. We've had conversations with attorney Barger regarding, regarding the possible contract for the highway supervisor, talked with attorney Barger regarding the OSHA citations, the OSHA meetings, OSHA meetings with Chief Dixon, creating the respiratory protection program. We filed our annual OSHA paperwork, which is a requirement having nothing to do with the OSHA citations. We've been collecting data and started to work on the technology plan that we've talked about during the budget process. The buildings and ground staff have been going out for their required hearing tests. We've done FMLA paperwork for three employees. We are working on onboarding two new board, board clerks, which will have files at upcoming meetings here in the next week or ten days. Working on a letter for the YWCA regarding use of space after July first. Their current contract at the Nacho Municipal Center ends at the end of June, and we have decided that we need that space at this point. The school has been gracious enough to offer them space at the school building, so they will be working out of the school after that date. We had a staff meeting last Thursday. We had the discussion about mask wearing. We had a discussion about where the board landed on the budget process. We are planning for a staff appreciation week here in mid-March. There'll be more details coming out about that. Certainly, I think there'll be an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to participate in at least some of those things if you're available and choose to. We talked about the COVID test distribution. We're planning for the public informational meeting on the connectivity. We've reached out to the unions regarding the discussions for contracts. We've yet to hear back from them regarding dates. They have completed their union meetings, and so we should, we should be hearing them very soon, for hearing from them very soon. We provided staff support for Winterfest. I know Pam was there. I understand it was a tremendous success, so hopefully that is something that will continue. We've met with the UConn students twice regarding the waterline projects. We've had discussions with the Manchester Water Company, attended a cost meeting, attended a crowd policy board meeting, attended the EHHD Board of Directors meeting, and the CTCMA meeting. Any questions? Been a busy month.
Thank you for the quick run-through and, and a budget on top of that, so well done.
Well, you guys participated in the budget. Occasionally, I see my wife and get some sleep.
And a new, a new truck. Is there anything other?
The only other thing I put down here was the test kit distribution, because I didn't want to miss that. And if anybody can't find the date, and if, you know, if you want to show up as members of the board and participate in that, I'm sure the library staff would be happy to have you. I know Pam said she was going to try to go, I know, you know, Bob's made it to some.
Is that a Saturday?
I, I thought it was a Saturday, but Pam and I are remembering differently, so I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll get an email out to all of you to confirm what the date and time is, so that if you, if you want to participate, you certainly can.
Thank you. If there are no other further questions, then I will move on to the, to the number ten, the executive session. At this time, I would ask that recording be suspended, but I need a motion, please, to move this into executive session.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Adam, make it.
And it should invite you into the executive session if you want me.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Adam?
And that actually, well, I moved that we go into executive session to draft of a separation agreement for the highway supervisor, and that we invite Mr. Rupert to, into the executive session.
And do I have a second? Bob Moore has seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 It is?
That's exactly what I would say.
Eight forty-six, and we're, eight forty-six, and we're moving into executive session. At this time, I ask that the recording be suspended.